Roll call.
Markovich.
Here.
Pissalik.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Kelwinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Here.
Poland.
Here.
Opinker.
Here.
Inahosa.
Here.
Higgs.
Here, let the record reflect nine present. Number three on the agenda is reading of the minutes, reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Opinker.
I'd like to make a motion, we accept the minutes from 3:28:11.
Second. It's been motioned by Councilman Opinker, second by Councilman Inahosa, that we accept the minutes as read. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nay, motion passes. Number four on the agenda is approval of claims, approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims for council meeting April 11th from March 23rd through April 16, 2011. Beginning with claims dated 3:29:11 and ending with claims dated 4:06:11, claim number 1441 through claim number 1706, I so move.
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilwoman Poland, that we approve claims dated March 26, 2011 through April 6, 2011. For council meeting scheduled April 11, 2011, starting with claim 1441 and ending in claim 1706, is there any discussion on the claim? Any discussion on the claim? Any discussion on the claim? Roll call vote on the claim.
Markovich.
No.
Pissalik.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Poland.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Inahosa.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes, motion passes, eight in favor and one no. Number five on the agenda is public hearing.
11-8, authorizing the city controller to transfer from one line item to another for the common council $100,000.
Anyone wishing to speak on this item and this item alone may do so by approaching the podium and speaking to this issue.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I would like to have the ordinance read in its entirety, please, so people will know what the public hearing is about.
Can you please read that in its entirety, please?
Whereas the common council of the city of Hammond finds that because of circumstances which could not have been anticipated at the time the budget was adopted, there is a need to transfer funds to the council promotional account to provide, among other things, for the citizens of the city to receive live broadcasts of city council meetings over cable. And four district councilmen have agreed to use gaming money intended for their districts for such purposes. Whereas, since the transfer does not require the expenditure of more money than the total amount set out in the Hammond Common Council 2011 budget, that the transfer may be made by proper ordinance at a regular public meeting of the common council and be certified by the county auditor. Therefore, be it ordained by the common council of the city of Hammond, that the city controller be, and he is hereby authorized, to provide the account reductions and account appropriations as follows. District 2, $25,000; District 3, $25,000; District 4, $25,000; District 6, $25,000, for a total of $100,000, transferred to the promotional account, be it further ordained by the common council of the city of Hammond pursuant to provisions of IC 6-1.1-18-6, that the foregoing transfer may be made without notice and without the approval of the Indiana Department of Local Government Finance.
Anyone wishing to speak on this item may do so at this time by approaching the podium. This is a public hearing. Can you please state your name for the record?
George Stoia, Robertsdale. I just, I'm not going to speak so much against it as maybe to bring out it might be redundant insofar as I've been using the current system that the mayor instituted with online, and I know that's different from what's being proposed here vis-à-vis the television, but got to tell you, that online thing is fabulous, it truly is. I don't know the ins and outs of the technology, I just know that you click it on and it works. We have a permanent archive now, well, not permanent, but as permanent as you can get anymore. I just think it's redundant and at a price tag of 100 grand.
Iris.
Yeah, you guys got to look and see, you can do better, do something more with that money, but hey, that's just my opinion, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak?
Bob Markovich, 1821 Davis Avenue. We know what's going on here. I, as a resident, have Comcast Cable, my family's not able to watch the council meetings live on TV. While I've been walking and canvassing the city, I've come across several senior citizens keep asking why aren't the council meetings on TV? And I says, "We're trying to do it, we're trying to appropriate the money." Four councilmen would like to spend their money for it. I've been to the Board of Works with the letter. The mayor will not sign off on it. Several councilmen know how that works when they want to appropriate $300,000 for the Festival of the Lakes, they send $25,000 to $50,000 for $280,000 to $300,000 for entertainment for Festival of the Lakes. Those claims do not even come before the common council. Therefore, they're passed. I went for the Board of Works and was told that the proper paperwork from the mayor has not been there. So whatever the proper procedure is, it seems like it works one way for one and it doesn't work the other way for the other. Tonight, I voted against the claims. Whether any of you other councilmen realized, there was probably close to maybe $300,000 to $400,000 there for mayor's gaming for different organizations, for FedEx, for Petco, for schools, for sports, and I don't know where that comes under the mayor's gaming, where you allow that kind of money to be spent. And I'm sure the state board of accounts will be looking at that as well as the gaming commission. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak?
Amy Wixmo, 1220 Cherry Street. I would like to bring up that a lot of people in the city don't have Comcast. I personally have Wow, most of the people I know have Dish. Also, I'd also, the original intention of this money was first, infrastructure upgrades, and as time has gone on, I see less infrastructure upgrades and money being spent elsewhere. And I mean, there are things that money needs to go to, I mean, you look at the Henry Unions in some of these different districts, but I would like to focus to return more to the infrastructure upgrades, especially with the flooding problems that we've had. I mean, can you imagine if you go back 20 years and we had the flooding issues that we had a couple of years ago, how much worse it would have been in parts of this city? We don't know what's going to happen, I mean, the weather has been crazy, you know, they've done what they can with a little cow, but how far is that going to go? So, thank you.
Michael Opinker, 3250 473rd Street. As I said earlier, if I can't take care of all my constituents, if everybody had Comcast in the 5th district, yes, I'd appropriate the $25,000 for it. But if all 100% can't take advantage of it, I'm shooting this one down. Like I says, there's other things I could use that $25,000 for in my district, and that's the way I look at it.
Alvin Cheeks, 800 Block of Merrill. I graduated from Columbia College, I've been in production all my life. I started out with United Cable Artists, that was the first cable company to come into the city of Hammond in 1983. When Sharon and Nathan developed the Comcast facility and developed what was there, it was where everybody can get opportunity to be in production and film. Currently, if I asked either one of the camera people over there, "What's gray matter? What aperture are you shooting at?", you know, "What's an overloop?". If we're going to deal with people being able to do productions and stuff like that, they should be union guys, just like me, or they should have the ability to be able to answer any question that I ask about post-production. If we're going to develop a system, it needs to be inclusionary. I'm a Comcast guy, I'm a United Cable Artists guy, you know, because they open up opportunity for me and other people to go places like Columbia College, to go places like Juilliard. If we have a system that everybody cannot be included, you know, I don't know, a lot of people say, you know, they don't have Comcast, but if you look at their track record of making sure that individuals or minorities got opportunity to go to college, if I wanted to work one of the cameras, how would I get a job? It's already bid it out, how would I get opportunity to show whether I had the skills or not? I'm a, right now currently, I work for Rockefeller Records, I'm a Hammond guy. We've done productions all over the United States. But how many opportunities do I get as minority film producer to opportunity to bid on a job? It wasn't bid it out to everybody, everybody should have opportunity to bid on post-production. I know the people at Comcast, I know the people at United Artists, they open up those doors for anybody that has the talent to be able to produce a video. Right now, where's that application at? Give me a camera, I'll take it apart for you, you can blindfold me. You know, we need an opportunity where minorities can grow. The opportunities that I see here is just more people getting more money. I'm a fan of the mayor, it's no secret, but I'm a fan of photography and video technology. I had my first company when I was 15 years old. If we want to develop people and develop our students in this city, we have to create an opportunity where they can learn post-production. If you're going to learn post-production, you have to learn it from the ground up. A place like Comcast, a place like United Cable Artists gives a person to have a hand-on feel, to know what a 5800 camera is, to know how to edit, to know how to soft wipe, to know how to do video imaging. Those things happened at United Cable Artists and at Comcast. You know, I remember, I was, at that time, Mr. Golick was on the council, at that time, Ed Repay, they pounded it out to ensure that the residents of Hammond had an opportunity to touch the cameras, the cameras are right back there. If we're going to develop something, we need to develop something that all the citizens can take part in. If they're going to have a production thing, they should open it up where everybody can bid on the contract, not for one company to be in a situation where they bring in people that have not, don't have the ability to be able to do it. I challenge anybody, if, give me an overloop, give me a soft wipe, you know, prove to me you know post-production, prove to me you know the business. To me, it's heartening that I live in this city, I didn't have opportunity to bid on it. You say I need the bonding? Then bond it out, make that production where everybody can take part in it. There's plenty of talented people in this city that do post-production. It shouldn't be a thing just because you have one contract that you had the ability just to receive another one. I challenge them, give me a whiteout, you know what I'm saying? What do we have for our dollar? At United Cable Artists and at Comcast, at least all of the residents got a chance to learn production. Are they going to have a production class where the students in Hammond can learn post-production, can have opportunity to work on movies like Batman? That blew my mind to see those kind of people coming to Hammond and say, "Hey chicks, we want you to come with us." We need it where all our students can know what it is to be in the sound unions guild. We have union guys in this city that don't even have the ability to be able to work. It's, the film guild is in Hammond, but how many people that's working the cameras not are union guys? How many of them, how many of them know that, they're not even supposed to carry their cameras in here, a roadie is supposed to carry them, that roadie is from Hammond, he should have opportunity to work. When they do stuff at Festival of the Lakes, they make sure that the people that are in the unions, they get opportunity to work. Photography is just like that, I spent my life in photography, so it's heartrending to live in a city where I didn't get opportunity to bid. I'll challenge them, any type of equipment that they have, whether it's film camera, whether it's post-production, whether it's high eight, I can work it, there's talented people around here, not only me. We need an opportunity where everybody can feel a part of the pot, not just the same segment of individuals receiving something that I assure you, I can ask three questions that I guarantee they can't answer. We need an opportunity where everybody has the opportunity to take in, and that's what we had when we had Comcast, anybody that wanted to put on a show has the ability to put on a show. Anybody that wanted to learn how to soft wipe, how to develop a show, can learn it. I had the opportunity to go to Juilliard because I got my start at United Cable Artists, because I got my start at United Cable Artists. I hope that this council will ensure that every resident gets the opportunity to develop theirself. Thank you for your opportunity.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this issue? As it relates to authorizing the city controller to transfer from one line item to another? Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Public hearing is now closed. Number six is communications, communication. I received a couple of correspondence from a couple of cities and towns. One is from the city of, Town of Dyer, Office of the Clerk Treasure, Patrick Harrock, Clerk Treasure, Hammond, Anthony Higgs, President of the Hammond Common Council, 5925 Cavan Avenue, Hammond, Indiana. Dear Mr. Higgs, this letter is in response to your letter dated March 29, 2011 regarding requirements for garage and yard sale. The Town of Dyer does not have any ordinances or requirements regarding garage sales. Make this part of the record. Received another letter from Whiting Refinery for a Heart of Community, Adam S., Mark S. Adam, Clerk Treasure, Mr. Anthony Higgs, President of the Hammond Common Council, City of Hammond. It closes the ordinance pertaining to garage sales and the requirements of the later, later dated March 29, 2011. The city of Whiting ordinances are located on the website, www.whitingindiana.com, under link codes of ordinances as traffic issues when garage sales happen. It is not an issue for us, the only time there is an issue is for the citywide garage sale, Garage Manual, which is organized by the Chamber of Commerce. If you have any further questions, contact me at 219-659-3100, Mark S. Adams. And I have a copy of the ordinance from the city of Whiting. You can make this part of the record and you can give me a copy back, okay? Town of Highland, Highland Municipal Building, 3333 Ridge Road, Highland, Indiana, 46322. Anthony Higgs, President, Hammond Common Council, 5925 Cavan Avenue, Hammond, Indiana, 46320, garage and yard sales. Dear President Higgs, I am writing this letter in response to your inquiry regarding garage and yard sales. Presently, the Town of Highland Council has adopted an ordinance regulating garage and yard sales. Garage and yard sales signed however are governed by the building department through our signed ordinance. Please find enclosed a copy of the Town of Highland signed regulations, a traffic problem which may occur during a garage and yard sale event in Hammond through the Highland Police Department. I am unaware of that, there has been a traffic problem in the past. If you have any further questions, feel free to contact me at 219-838-1080, respectfully, Michael W. Gritsch, Clerk Treasure. You can make this part of the record as well. I think that was the only one, because we had requested some correspondence from the cities and towns around us, I think at the last meeting when that ordinance was passed. Do have a letter from the Department of Planning and Development, City of Hammond, Office of the Common Council, Attention, Anthony W. Higgs, 5925 Cavan Avenue, Hammond Walmart. Planning and development for the city of Hammond have not had any communication in regard to changes at the Hammond Walmart located just south of 16050. If we receive any communications in the future, in regards to this site, I will contact you and let you know of any potential future projects. Let us know if you need any further information, thank you. Phil Talan, Executive Director of Planning and Development. I think that's it. Cleanup week has started in the 3rd district and we have dumpsters placed throughout the district and they are located, it's from April 11th to the 17th, and the dumpsters will be placed in the following locations, the corner of Porter Road and Columbia Avenue, corner of Wallace Road and Highland Street, the corner of Howard Avenue and Moore Street, the corner of Harrison Park and Lyman Avenue, near the tennis court, corner of Glendale Parkway, vacant lot located at 5618 Washington Avenue, corner of McCook Avenue and 165th Street, along railroad tracks near Block Shelter, corner of May Street and Carroll Street. That is it, and I did receive another correspondence from Raymond Fletcher in regards to Clark Gas Station, I think it's not handicap accessible, so we would request that a letter be sent over to the law department so they can take a look at that. Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Number seven is committee reports, committee reports, are there any committee reports? Committee reports, committee reports is now closed. Number eight on the agenda is ordinances on third reading and final passes, there are none tonight, so. Ordinances on third reading and final passes is now closed. Number nine, introduction of ordinances.
1016, an ordinance to appropriate funds in the Hotel Motel Innkeepers Tax Fund for the Planning and Development Department.
Mr. President.
Councilman Vitale.
I'd like to move to have 11-16 go through first and second reading. Second. Refer to council as a whole and a public hearing set for May 9, 2011.
It's been motioned by Councilman Vitale, second by Councilman Opinker, that we move ordinance number 1116 by first and second reading by Vitale and refer to council as a whole, with the public hearing scheduled on May 9, 2011. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nay, motion passes. Number B.
1117, ordinance to provide for unlimited debate in the common council.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for first and second reading and refer to council as a whole.
Second. It's been motioned by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Inahosa, that we move 1117 by first and second reading by Vitale and refer to council as a whole. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Last council meeting, Roberts Rules of Order rule was cited. There's interpretation as far as debate, the amount of time what debate is or when somebody talks, but it would be unfair to the citizens of Hammond that when debate is going up here and you have a councilman or councilwoman who is misinformed and they don't have the right information, and they come up here and they tell information that is true and unfalse, that another councilman, if they do have that information, that they should be able to go ahead and continue debate so that all the true and right information will be brought out during the debate and discussion. A lot of times ordinances are passed and all the information is not presented. There are some misinterpretations by some councilmen that feel that, well, just like this spending of money for the cable television, one of my colleagues, Michael Opinker, got upset up there and said he's not going to spend $25,000. Well, that ordinance is not asking for $25,000, $25,000 for Mr. Opinker. So here he's saying he's voting against something and they're not even asking for money from him. The four councilmen that were asking for the money, they should have that right if they want to spend it that way. That's discretionary money to use under the gaming. So that's the reason for the debate, that when some councilmen get up and say things that are not true, that the opportunity will be given to make sure that the proper information will be entered into the record and everybody will be heard and enter into dialogue so that the true facts will come out. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion as it relates to ordinance number 1117?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sir, who?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowenski.
Roll call vote, please.
What do we roll call?
The ordinance for first and second reading.
It's going to commit.
It's going to a vote.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Kowenski, second by Councilman Opinker, that we have a roll call vote as it relates to ordinance 11-17. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on the roll call vote? Any discussion on the roll call vote? Roll call vote on 1117.
Markovich.
Yes.
Pissalik.
No.
Vitale.
No.
Kelwinski.
No.
Salinas.
No.
Poland.
No.
Opinker.
No.
Inahosa.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes, motion fails, six noes, three yeses. Number 10 on the agenda is resolutions, there are none. Number 11 is new and unfinished business, is there any?
Mr. Chairman.
New and unfinished business?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Salinas.
That was a letter sent to the Public Board of Works and the Department of Transportation intent to attention Mike McPhillips in La Porte, Indiana. I had some residents on the Chicago Avenue between Johnson and Holman have been complaining at their houses, all the houses there are rattling, and I sat in a few of their living rooms and the houses do shake, so we need to do something about this Chicago Avenue street. So I need a letter stating, to try to rectify this problem, I know it's a state highway, and Stan DeStatney, I talked to him briefly this morning on it, and I just want to make a letter stating that we need to take care of this problem on Chicago Avenue between Johnson and Holman. I saw a move.
Second. It's been motioned by Councilman Salinas, second by Councilman Vitale, that we send a letter to the Indiana Department of Transportation as it relates to Johnson, where the houses are rattling and they need some attention as to see what kind of structural foundation can be fixed as it relates to those properties adjacent to Johnson Street. Is there any other discussion to the letter? Any other discussion to the letter? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nay, motion passes. Like a letter sent to the Park Department, 5700 Block of Lyman, there are some trees that need, that are falling down and they're actually in a park where they need to be cut down, so I want to send that to the Park Department. That's in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilwoman Poland, that we send a letter to the Park Department relating the trees on the 5700 block of Lyman. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nay, motion passes. New and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Poland.
I'd like to announce the 4th district cleanup. We are going to have dumpsters placed at 165th and Lyman on the corner, 173rd and Lyman, 177th and River Drive, 1100 River Drive on the corner, 167th and Columbia. and Columbia, Optimus Park, there will be two dumpsters there, Edison Pool Parking Lot, one hundred and seventy-sixth and Tapper and one hundred and seventy-sixth and Linden. This will be April eighteenth through the twenty-fourth. Service school hours are welcome. If you have any children that need to get their hours in, I would be more than willing to put them to work. We will have gloves and bags available and you can contact me at my house. I'll give you my cell phone, seven eight nine oh two six seven, and I will have gloves and bags available. If anyone would like to call me, I will deliver them to your location. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Poland, for that point of conversation as it relates to your cleanup as well. I was glad when I brought that ordinance and amended the ordinance into dumpsters and cleanup because it's a wonderful thing throughout the city. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Opinker.
I'd like to also announce a cleanup in the fifth district which is going to be held April twenty-fifth to May second. The dumpsters are going to be scattered throughout the fifth, obviously. Hundred and seventy-fourth and Grand, northwest corner of one hundred and seventy-fourth, hundred and seventy-sixth Place in Maryland, south side, thirty-one twenty, hundred and seventieth Court, dead end, north side of street, one hundred and seventy-fifth in Arizona, Dialing Park, south side of street, seventy-four oh four, hundred and seventy-fourth, north side of street, seventy-six eighteen Alexander, east side of street, one hundred and seventy-first and McCook, northeast corner, one hundred and sixty-seventh in between Marshall and Alexander, the north side of the street, one hundred and seventy-first and Osborne, southwest corner, Martha and Ontario, northeast corner, one hundred and sixty-ninth and Woodmar, northeast corner on Parkway, Alcott and one hundred and seventy-third, southeast corner, southeastern and one hundred and seventy-fifth, northeast corner, Beverly and Belmont, northeast corner, one hundred and seventy-fifth and Bertram, southwest corner, one hundred and seventy-third and southeastern, northeast corner, one hundred and seventy-third and Walnut, southeast corner, one hundred and seventy-first and Chestnut, northwest corner, one hundred and seventieth and Northcott, west side of street, and one hundred and sixty-seventh and Bering, southeast corner.
Boy, that's a lot of dumpsters. Man. Any other new and unfinished business? Mr. President. Councilman Hinaosa.
Yeah, also in the sixth district, we'll be having the cleanup from April twenty-first to the twenty-sixth. They're going to be at twenty locations. Has been advertising a newspaper and the C R publications. They've been in more or less in the same locations for the past two, three years, so they'll spot them. And I'd also like to send three letters. Two of them are going to be to NIPSCO and one is going to be to Police Chief Brian Miller. The first one is to Police Chief Brian Miller to watch the speeders on Janet, twenty-eight-hundred and twenty-nine-hundred blocks, and also running of the stop sign at the corner of Janet and California.
There a second?
Second.
It's been motion by Councilman Hinaosa, second by Councilwoman Poland, that we send a letter to the Police Chief as it relates to the speeders. On what street is that, Councilman?
Janet.
Janet? That's the only street they're speeding on?
Yeah, Janet and running the stop sign on Janet and California.
And what was the other second part of the letter?
The second, the second one is to NIPSCO, to send a letter to NIPSCO on a new pole that was installed two years ago at the rear of the home of thirty-seven, thirty-two, one hundred and seventy-fifth place. Wires are dragging on the garage and cables need to be attached to the new pole. And also to NIPSCO, waiting for NIPSCO to put in three new trees at sixty-seven oh four Nevada on one hundred and sixty-seventh Parkway and one tree at sixty-seven oh three Nevada on Parkway on one hundred and sixty-seventh. I so moved.
Second.
It's been motion by Councilman Hinaosa. We already had a motion and a second. That's just a second letter to the first motion and we're just going to have those two letters sent. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Clerk, you got that? Any nays? Motion passes. I'd like a letter sent to Code Enforcement as it relates to nine oh four Moore Street and six oh four Kenwood for a demo. Like to know the status and if they can send me a correspondence as to where we're at with having those two properties demo. I so moved.
Second.
It's been motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilwoman Poland, that we send a letter to Code Enforcement and Building as it relates to those two properties. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. New and unfinished business. I'd like to identify Ms. Dent, who's in the audience, who's on the library board. Thank you for coming, Ms. Dent. Our new and unfinished business, is there any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
I'd like to thank, you know, you were there, Council President, a few of us others were there for the NIPSCO gathering we had the other day over at Hammond High and it was nice that we all had the opportunity to speak our piece to not let that raise happen. I'll thank everybody that was there.
Thank you, Councilman Spitali. I think it was very important that we come out against NIPSCO as it relates to increasing the NIPSCO bills, especially with the way things are and, you know, we all got to buckle up and cut back and we certainly haven't had a raise and as I stated before and when we had that dialogue is that I work not just at election time, but three hundred and sixty-five days a year, available and accessible to all my constituents and so I felt as though we should have gotten a raise, but for two years in a row, we have not.
It was a good turnout, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Number twelve on the agenda is public expression. Anyone wishing to speak? We will go down the list and you can come to the podium and address the council. Number one on the list is Ann Hubbard at fifty-nine twenty-seven Wallace Road.
Good evening, Council Board. My name is Ann Hubbard and I reside in the Pullman District. And this is a letter to the Council Board dated April eleventh, two thousand and eleven. Around election time, some politicians stretched the truth and this is the first time that I heard a politician tell a lie on a church. In my opinion, that is the ultimate disgrace. Of all the other institutions within this city, county, state, or country, why would someone choose to involve churches in their own truths? For those of you who didn't listen to W J O B's early morning talk show on Monday, March twenty-eighth, you missed out on the answer I was given by Third District Councilman Anthony Higgs. Councilman Higgs was stating examples of how he was for the Third District, a proven leader. He stated he had quarterly meetings with the residents of the Third District to address any concerns they have. I've lived in the Third District over seven years and never heard of any such meetings. I called into the show to question Councilman Higgs about the quarterly meetings. My direct question to him was, Councilman Higgs, when and what time and where are these quarterly meetings held you talk about? After a few moments, he finally responded. The meetings are announced in churches and in the newspaper. Councilman Higgs and I belong to the same church and I've never heard any announcement of quarterly meetings he was holding in the community or Third District. And other members are also complaining they are unaware of any such meetings. Residents from Hammond have emailed and told me they heard Councilman Higgs claim on the radio and those in the Third District are concerned that he made no announcements in their church. I checked the Times and the Gary Post newspapers for the last four years and there was nothing to be found about Councilman Higgs announcing quarterly meetings. Residents in the city of Hammond and the surrounding area heard my conversations on the radio with Councilman Higgs. He should retract that statement if it's not true or he should provide proof that these meetings existed by providing places, dates, and times where these meetings were held. People are disgusted at the dirty politics that are played at the residents' expense and want to end the lies. Speak the truth. There's pride in winning with honesty. The residents of the Third District deserve a honest, proven leader. Edmund Burke once said, "All that is needed for evil to succeed is that decent human beings do nothing." Residents should speak up when they know they're not being told the truth. Ann Hubbard, Third District Resident, Pullman District.
Well, I'm going to immediately respond because I am the president.
Final order, it's public expression.
Well, I'm going to open it back up. I will respond at some point. Now, Jim Promeski? I'll take care of that in a few minutes. I can't wait.
I'm glad to be here to be a peacemaker tonight. I have a concern about park properties in Hammond. When I was a kid, you could go to a city park and you could have a pickup ballgame. There were plenty of vacant lots where that could transpire. And about a week ago, I find out that Hammond has negotiated some kind of deal with Purdue University Calumet to give them primary access to much of Dalling Park over in Hessville. Isn't that something that the council should be having a hearing on, public hearings? Isn't that something that the council should have some say-so about? I mean, parkland is very, very valuable in this city. We don't have a lot of the green spaces that we had when I was a kid. There's no woods to go play in anymore. Now we're at a situation where compromising our parks. You can say, well, we have all these new million-dollar ballfields and the likes, but they're not available to kids to play in at will. They have to be in an organized league in order to be able to do that. And quite frankly, having watched some of the ways the adults orchestrate these ballgames, the kids were much better off doing it themselves. So my point of this is that I don't think that the mayor and Purdue University Calumet should be allowed to conspire and take away park property from the citizens of Hammond. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex? Andrade?
Andrade.
Andrade.
I was here to come back and speak about that still nothing has been done about the problems happening at my house. And the same week that I came last time to your meeting, two days later, my house was shot at the middle at eleven-thirty at night. My mom was outside. I'm wondering if anyone's looked into it. The same last Tuesday, we were sitting in the hospital and the Escobedo family had the nerve to call my dad's cell phone and admit to the shooting that happened at my house two Thursdays ago at eleven-thirty at night. And I was looking to see if anyone's looked into it at all because the FBI hasn't done anything, the Hammond Police hasn't done anything, and the Lake County sheriffs have not done anything. And there is a detective on this, but I have not heard anything back from them.
Public expression, so when we open back up, your councilman from your particular district can speak to that issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Martine? Andrade? Maritza?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Maritza Andrade. No, I'm not okay after the shooting on my house. I was right in front of my house when this happened and yes, I was rushed to the emergency room. I was having small contractions and please, I'm asking again, as my husband and my son has been asking over and over again, Mr. Chico Hinaosa, we're asking you again. Please do something. You're putting us at risk, not only myself, but my seven kids. So please, I'm asking you again, do something.
Thank you. Brandt Cobb, the second. Hopefully this is something productive.
It is, sir. My name is Brandt Cobb. I attend Hammond High School. I run track. I'm seventeen and I'm a junior. I'm also a member at the Hammond Boys and Girls Club and this past week, we attended a college tour and I'm up here just generally to say thank you to everyone that donated and contributed to the youth. I'm one of twenty-four that attended this trip and it was a very successful, a very successful trip and I learned a lot from it. It exposed me to a lot of things that you usually don't see on a day-to-day basis and just to say thank you for everyone that gave the opportunity to everybody that attended this trip. Thank you.
No, thank you. Carolyn Jackson?
To finish off, if anyone wants to see the letter or the photos from the trip.
If you could, we'll make that a part of the record. Do you need the photos back?
No.
Can someone get that for me, please? Thank you so much. Anytime we can do anything for you, let us know.
Good evening. While I was out the other day, several people on Harrison Street expressed with the weather getting warm, you're getting a lot of people out drag racing up and down Harrison Street. They have called the police, they say several times, and no one has come. I would certainly appreciate if a letter could be sent so that they can kind of monitor that area between, I guess it's one hundred and seventy-third and maybe one hundred and Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Carlotta Blake King.
Good evening, Council. Carlotta Blake King. I'm a member of Memorial Church of God and Christ and my responsibility, one of my many responsibilities, is taking care of the announcements. At no point did we ever receive an announcement from Councilman Higgs regarding any Third District Council quarterly meetings. Additionally, last week, I became very disturbed from hearing a comment from Councilman Higgs on W J O B regarding Bethany Childcare and Development Center. As a board member of Bethany Childcare and Development Center, to my knowledge, there's been any, there has not been any plans regarding a community center or being demolished. Councilman Higgs made the comment that he and the mayor were going to establish a community center there and if not that, they would, they would be demolishing it. I'm not only a board of directors there, but I'm also the realtor that we are looking for a buyer. So again, hopefully our elected officials, when they go on radio and go over the airways, they would certainly use discretion and speak the truth. Thank you very much.
George Stoya. Raymond Fletcher. Allen, you're after him, so...
He asked me.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the council. On your February twenty-eighth, two thousand and eleven meeting, you approved claims seven thirty-nine, seven forty, and seven forty-one for the Northwest Indiana Regional Bus Authority. Each one of those claims were two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for a total of six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. At the March twenty-eighth Regional Bus Authority meeting, if you recall, last time I came for you, I told you that the city controller is also the treasurer for the Regional Bus Authority. If you go to everybodycounts.org and play the meeting from March twenty-eighth, you will see that our controller, the RBA treasurer, accepted only two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Now, I'm just curious where this money, money went to. Now, some of you may be concerned about the number of garage sales we can have in our community or, you know, limiting debate and conversation on these serious issues. I'm going to stay focused on finding out where this money is and hopefully somebody will look into this and get answers. Thank you. Alvin Cheeks.
Alvin Cheeks, eight hundred block of Merrill. I think I'll answer the first question last. It's not static. That's the inline tap that I was talking about. That's bad.
You might need to step back a little bit, Alvin.
No, that's not it, councilman. That's the inline tap that you... Alvin Cheeks, eight hundred block of Merrill. The first issue I'm going to talk about is my son's dog, Luca Bracy. My son's dog was stolen. The point about the dog is, is that it's my son's, but also the dog is one of the best search and rescue dogs in the business, so I'm willing to give ten thousand dollars cash to the return of Luca Bracy when my son won't be mad at me. Ten thousand dollars cash to the individuals that have the dog, no questions asked, cash.
I found that dog.
Yeah. It's a tan German Shepherd, female. It's, it's a tan German Shepherd female. Um, it was trained in Shitschen, and, uh, it helps people, you know, that are in danger, so it's a very talented dog, and, uh, I spent a lot of time training it with some of the best trainers. So, I just want my son's dog back. Thank you. The, the thing that I'm here for is in regards to, uh, I have been also, too, entertaining conversations with the Merrill in regards to, uh, bringing a youth center, um, to the Third District, to the city of Hammond, so I, I do know those, uh, conversations are happening. I'm not going to go deep into them or anything like that, but I can verify that those conversations are taking place. Um, the other thing I'd like to talk to is, is in regards to, uh, separation of church and state. Um, we, y- you can involve church and state under the Indiana State Constitution, so I just would adhere, you Councilman Higgs, not to get yourself a five-thousand-dollar fine in regards to talking about church and states matter, being that you're president of the council, and our city doesn't have a lot of money. The other thing is that I, I went into the sixth district to, uh, make the peace. I asked Minister Farrakhan to provide me with three guys, one Hispanic, and two of his top generals to, uh, make the peace with his family. I, um, found out some interesting things. The individuals that are causing the problems in, uh, Mr. Hannah's district, they're, they're not gang members, they're considered renegades. What that is, is that people that want to be in a gang, they'll show off to, uh, get initiated. Um, it was tracked back to the number thirteen. The thirteen is, is symbolizing to a drug cartel, and also symbolizing what, what is considered a professional hit team. Um, the, the interesting part of these youth leaders that I call them, some people call them gang members, I call them youth leaders. The interesting part is that they swore that, you know, nothing is taking place, it was three different, uh, factions that exist in the city of Hammond. You know, and it's just more or less, they're, they want to be known, so they're, they're creating these problems. It, it's not Mr. Hannah Hossa doing it. I, I gave that young man my handshake that, that I would go look myself. And, uh, you know, the restaurant owner gave us the Free Reynolds Restaurant, we took him out to dinner. It, it, who's ever doing it, they're not from a faction of the, the gangs that they're saying, and, and I do know the gangs, I'm not going to say that they're in gangs, I consider them youth leaders. What has to happen, I think, in the sixth district is that they, they need patrols for this family, but, you know, I, i- it's just interesting that everybody thinks it's a gang. I don't personally think it's a gang. The individuals that are, are youth leaders, they're not participating in the activity that's going on. They don't, they don't know Mr. Hannah Hossa. So, uh, I just say that, and I did get on my handshake, so I went out to speak with him, and my time is up by the beep.
Thank you, Mr. Cheeks. Uh, can I get a motion to go back to the regular order of business?
Mr. President?
Councilman Hinojosa.
Uh, motion to suspend the rules so we can, uh, read this communication here by Chief Miller and, and other matters.
Second.
It's been motion by Councilman Hinojosa, second by Councilwoman Poland, that we go return back to the regular order of business. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. Let me first say.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Markovich, let me first say something here. I'm going to make the, make this perfectly clear to everybody that's in the audience and, uh, on the internet and all. I've never, ever been disrespected like I was at a crime watch meeting when I was invited by one of the young ladies that approached this podium tonight in regards to telling me to kiss her bottom. That is disrespectful, it's a disgrace, and for you to run up here in the council meeting and act like you're the right person, or you're doing something so.
Mr. Chairman?
Wonderful. No, I have the floor.
Robert's Rules of Order calls that the president steps down to speak and not speak from the chair.
Mr. President? Councilman Higgs? As I stated before, I've never been so disrespected in my life, and my mother was there, my aunt was there, a number of my family members were there, and I ate it and I choked it up like a soldier. Totally disrespectful. Furthermore, anything pertaining to Third District, my work speaks for itself. There's nothing else to be said. I'll see you on May third.
Mr. President?
Councilman Hinojosa?
I have a letter here from the Hammond Police Department. Uh, it's dated March thirtieth, two thousand and eleven. It says, uh, "Member of the Hammond City Council, Council members, I wish to take this moment to address some of the issues presented to you by Mr. Antonio Andrade and his son Alex Mr. Un-" Alex. Mr. Andrade stated that the Hammond Police Department is not investigating an alleged felony intimidation that happened to his son Alex at the family home in Hesville. The accusation Andrade makes against the Hammond Police Department is false. Officers responded to the household and took a criminal offense report. This case was assigned to a detective in our Criminal Investigation Division shortly thereafter. The detective contact, contacted Alex Andrade and asked that he come to the Hammond Police Department to provide formal statement and view suspect photos. Alex initiated, initially agreed to cooperate with the investigation and made an appointment to come to our department and meet with the detective. On the agreed-upon day, Alex Andrade failed to appear and did not call to reschedule. Additional requests to reschedule their appointment have been unsuccessful. Obviously, it is difficult to investigate a crime in which the victim is less than fully cooperative without Alex Andrade viewing potential suspects and making identification. It is doubtful that we can fully investigate the crime or bring it to the successful conclusion. Finally, the Hammond Police Department works diligently to pursue violent criminals in our city. We take all reports of a criminal nature seriously and strive to investigate them. If you have any questions about this investigation or any other matter, please contact, uh, eight-five-two-six-three-thirty. Sincerely, Chief Brian Miller, Hammond Police Department.
Any other communications? New and unfinished business? Any other communication? Like a letter sent, uh, one-hundred-and-seventy-third, they said it was in Harrison, a lot of, uh, police, so.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Poland?
That's the fourth district, and, um, I would like a letter sent to Officer John Muta to patrol that area a little bit, uh, more. I, um, we do have extra patrols in the fourth district right now, uh, to the tune of over five thousand extra hours going out. Um, we just signed off on a hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars worth of extra police patrol, which amounts to over five thousand hours for the fourth district for the new year. Uh, we are heavily patrolled, we're the most patrolled district in, in the city right now. And, uh, there is any drag racing, is that, I'm sorry, was that what you said, drag racing going on between one-hundred-and-seventy-third and one-hundred-and-seventy-fifth? That's the first I've heard of it, and I will certainly bring this to, uh, Officer Muta's attention, and will definitely, was that in the evening hours? Okay.
So, you want a letter? Is there a second? Second? It's been motion by Councilwoman Poland, second by Councilman Hinojosa, that we send a letter to the chief in regards to the speeding on one-hundred-and-seventy-third and Harrison. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. Is there any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business? New and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Could I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
It's been motion by Councilman Spitali. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman O. Pinker. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. Good night. Mr. President? Yeah, everybody. I know that. Good night. 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 Good night.